Hello, everyone. Great. And thank you all for being here. It is seven o'clock on March fourteenth. For the city of Columbus, March fourteenth city council meeting. Tonight, we have a number of items on the agenda, including a discussion of the proposed North Eleventh Street LID's engineers report. A proposal for enhancements to our public meetings. We have our state of emergency is set to require or set to expire. We have some new business, including the sunset of our general fund fee, the utility rates for the next fiscal year. Proposed cost of living update for nonrepresented employees, a capital improvement plan for the next year. And an ordinance. Six eight two about the comprehensive plan. So but first, we're going to get started with our roll call. And save recorder.
Jessica Andrade.
Present.
Catherine Bisco.
Here.
Bruce Cozy.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
Here.
Teresa Nielsen.
Here.
David Lo.
Here.
And Chaz Jones.
I am here. Excellent. Thank you. So first thing we'll get started with our visitors and petitions. And I have this statement that I'm going to read and let's listen to packet was actually not modified according to what the council voted on in our February fourteenth meeting. So I have an addition that I will submit our previous guidelines. So this time is intended for individuals to speak and for council to listen. Members of the council will not discuss topics or make decisions during this time, but may take comments or requests under advisement, assign topics to a future council or standing committee agenda. We request staff to take an action. Comments about a topic scheduled for a public hearing should be given during the public hearing, not during the visitors and comments. Testimony time is limited to three minutes per speaker. A thirty second warning will be provided. Speakers should provide their name and their city of residence, providing counsel with a copy, written copy of your comments prior or during the meeting is always appreciated. And those who attend public meetings are required to adhere to the council rules and proceedings and observe the same standards of decorum as members of the city council. Further, at the discretion of the presiding officer, members of the public who failed to observe these rules of procedure will be asked to discontinue speaking, will not be allowed to speak again for the remainder of the meeting. So with that, we have two people, I believe, on the agenda to speak. And I see that Kristin Knudsen is Kristen Knudsen is here. And with that, Kristen, you can have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. City councillors, as we approach a resolution on Eleventh Street, I would like to remind you in the words at the back of the city council chambers to promote ethical and responsive municipal government, which provides its citizenry with high quality of municipal services in an efficient and cost effective manner. I would like to please remind you that you are not elected to serve the city manager. You're elected to serve the citizens of Fulham. Imagine being the subject for well over a year of large arbitrary assessments being debated on your property, which were not legally viable in a court of law. At the end of this very long and drawn out process, one in which you had retained a lawyer and were ready to go to court, you learned the council was considering a vote of confidence. A pat on the back for an arbitrary and abusive process, a process that caused residents of an entire street to an incredible amount of stress. A vote of confidence at this point in the conversation feels divisive to me. What's the purpose? To see who's in whose camp? To derail the process and delay a project that we have been told urgently needs to be started for safety reasons. It wasn't urgent last meeting. I can tell you from a personal standpoint, it feels like a slap in the face. We've endured misinformation, hours and hours of researching and writing about why the assessments were not congruent with the law. And finally, hiring lawyer. If it had gone to court, at least there would have been some accountability rather than a pat on the back. The absurdity that councillor Cozy is now suggesting a vote of confidence is offensive. We're ready to move on with our lives, but we continue to be shocked at the lack of accountability. We are ready for resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Krutson, you have one because well.
Yes, please.
That you have three minutes.
Okay. Mark Knudsen Fulham. I'm speaking tonight to address councillor Cozy's email in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting, asking for a vote of confidence for the city manager mayor. Would also like to address councillor Cozy's comments regarding my comments during public testimony at a recent council meeting. Because there is now a recommended motion that appears to be legal and not discriminate against us. It was my desire to lay low and not speak out anymore and have this finally be over. Additionally, the fear of retaliation for speaking out because of what I have experienced also weighs heavily on my mind. Despite this, I felt the need to set the record straight on the words that I spoke. I have heard it said several times that I have been making personal attacks on the city manager, and that is simply not true and is misleading and confuses the issue at hand because everyone knows that personal attacks are bad. Rather than listening to the merits of what I have to say and viewing the evidence in the public record that I provided, we can just chalk it up to me being mean and making personal attacks. I have not made comments on mannerisms or appearances or things of a personal nature, but things that have had a large impact on my financial well being as well as the financial well being of the other people on Eleventh Street. If revealing the truth is a personal attack and the basis to suppress someone's voice, we are all in trouble. This is not my word versus his word or hearsay. These things are a matter of critical falsehoods and misinformation that was published in the public record in May, July, and again this January. The truths in this case are vetted through and evident in the current recommended motion that is before the council tonight. Everything that I have been speaking out against for this last year is finally not included in the recommended motion. Gone are the made up, non remonstrance agreements that could have been used to impose a local improvement district and infringe on the legal rights of the citizens of Eleventh Street to protect themselves against unreasonable city assessments. We now have equity even for the Knudsons. We have the Heather Glenn subdivision honoring the conditions of approval and the city honoring its obligation to improve the street when the city park was put in. Gone are the assessments that retaliated against us and that were not in accordance with the law. Though I am not a great speaker, I still chose my words carefully when I gave public testimony. Without accusation, I defined coercion as the practice of persuading someone to do something by use of force or threats. I then said that with the threat of fifty thousand on one side of the chart and five thousand on the other, if I was willing to provide a yes vote, that I would feel coerced if he came to my door with that chart. I did not speak for the citizens of Eleventh Street whose house he showed up at. Only they could say whether or not they feel
Thirty seconds.
I'm not whether or not they were being coerced. I am not sure the rest of the citizens on Eleventh Street would be giving Mr. Workman a vote of confidence at this point. We have been through a lot and desire some resolution from this abusive and arbitrary process. A vote of confidence, particularly at this point, seems divisive and is forgetting who the victims are and making Chris Workman the victim. It would be more workman to take this opportunity to apologize to the citizens on Eleventh Street.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thanks for being here tonight. And then first thing we have on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. To have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counselor though.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Great. We have a motion made by counsel, seconded by councillor Cozy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of moving forward the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say I.
Hi.
Hi. All opposed, please raise your hands in a any abstentions. So we have motion carries six to zero with one extension. And then I then I had a request by councillor Nielsen. She wanted to go ahead and make a motion to limit debate. Council Nielsen.
Yes, I would like to make a motion this evening with our agenda as it is to limit debate to three minutes per individual. And so that also incorporate that every councillor has a chance to participate in the conversation prior to additional conversations or insights provided by the councillor, any councillor or secondary. So once again, limit motion to limit debate three minutes and have all the councillors have a chance to speak prior to a secondary comment being made by any particular councillor. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion made by councillor Nielsen. Do we have a second?
Seven.
So we have a motion seconded by councillor Low. Did you want to speak to that motion at all, councillor Nielsen or?
I think it's pretty self explanatory. So I think we're good.
Okay. And then we have a comment by councillor Cozy.
And just a request for clarification. How many times would each councillor be allowed to speak?
Council brewer, are you available there to counsel as far as recommendations on that?
Well, it's really up to the council, but as I understand the motion, it's three minutes. I don't know that that would limit the number of times. It would be three minutes per person.
And previously, we had done two rounds of of comments.
I think that would be adequate. I can add that to the motion.
So we have so you would like to amend your motion.
I will amend the motion. I will amend that.
Do we have a second from that amendment to the motion? So we have it seconded by councillor Low. And so comes a physical. I'm assuming you want to speak to this. Can we first just see if we can get this amended before we get to your comment? But any further comments on that amendment to the motion? Council Bisco.
No comments to the amendment, but I do have comments to the motion.
Sure. So all in favor of amending the motion, please raise your hand and say I. I all opposed, please use your hand and say nay. All abstentions. So we have motion carries five to zero with two extensions. And then so then councillor Bisco, you want to speak to the motion or you want to comment on the motion?
Right. So I would just like some clarification from the council since we have different individual councillors who have not only experienced they're serving on committees with specific topics of interest that might be coming before the council. It seems fundamentally flawed in that we would limit the commentary. And I just think of two specific instances where the local improvement district, actually, the the information that as the chair of the public works committee I brought before the city council. Clearly, that was more than three minutes. Clearly, that was in this space of what we might be calling debate. But I would say that arguably, I carry some of the most knowledge about that topic, not only as the chair, but having worked with the community in that space with North of Twelfth Street and North Eleventh Street. So my concern is that we are subverting the process of bringing information to this council. A more recent discussion also is as serving on the hope advisory board for what is two years and three months now. And preceding the public engagement on that topic, I too feel that I have a level of connection to that board. I am the liaison to that board outside of my service on that board. So that's just the liaison to the city council. And my concern would be is that three minutes in a topic on affordable housing or on homelessness or on topics of hope and how it's affecting our region seems counterproductive.
Thank you. Council Nielsen.
If I'm understanding this correctly, with the chance to comment, it would be six minutes total, three, three minutes in each chest. So you would actually have six minutes rather than the just three total.
Yep. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion to limit debate, please raise your hand and say I. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Motion carries five to two. And we had, I think it involves required a two thirds vote majority. Is that correct, Jim? And we do have that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we will move forward into old business and we first have a discussion of the proposed North Eleventh Street Engineers Report. And Chris, you or Chelsea, is she here today or is it Chris?
I'm covering that.
Okay. And you want to go ahead and introduce that topic?
I can. So according to the agenda summary that was included in the packet, and this was on the agenda for the February fourteenth meeting, got bumped to tonight's meeting just due to the lack of time. At the meeting prior, council directed staff to update the engineers report to remove specific properties and look at reducing the assessments. That was done. The one thing that was updated by the engineer in addition to those requests was that the hundred dollar per linear foot kind of sidewalk equivalent that was the estimate we were originally working with with the with the public works committee and also with the council. The recommendation was to reduce that down to seventy dollars would be a better estimate for, you know, specifically just to sidewalk improvements along that frontage. So he went ahead and made that change as well. And now that the plan's been adopted, staged in the very bottom of the agenda summary, it's really the council's kind of next step to either make specific amendments to the engineers report. Request additional information or to approve the engineers report and set a date in the future to hear from the public specifically invited would be those properties to be assessed. And to hear from them following the public hearing, the city council can make a determination to make additional changes to the assessments to move forward with the project or to table the project at that time. So still some steps to go on the process, but that is where we are as of tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council members may have about the engineers report best I can or about the process.
I do have a question about the engineers report. And I think this may have been a fault of the council or maybe the intention of the council, but there are some of this properties on the west side of Pioneer that have existing sidewalks. Were they assessed on this? Were they assessed on this project? And it looks like they were. And can you just offer some insight under the reasoning for that?
Yeah. So I guess the main line of thought is in order to reduce the overall cost to the individual property owners. The thought was to reduce the, you know, in order to have some metric to use, the thought was to reduce it down to the equivalent of what it would cost a property to install a sidewalk along their frontage. So rather than taking the full cost of that street improvement, pavement, sub base, street lighting, sidewalks, etc. The the metric that was recommended to use was the equivalent of a sidewalk on the frontage. And that was at the hundred dollars per linear front. So that was not based on whether there was an existing sidewalk there or there wasn't an existing sidewalk in place. It was just the metric used to try to evenly distribute the cost along the existing property owners at a much reduced rate than what it would be for the full street improvement was considered. So that was the number you sold. So being that was the case, the engineer did not reduce the assessment put on there depending on whether there was a existing sidewalk or not. I will note, even those existing sidewalks wouldn't need to be replaced as part of the project because they're not in the right place and they don't meet the city's standard for sidewalks at this time. So
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no comments, questions, councillor Lehman.
Yeah, along along similar lines, I have the same question. Thanks for bringing that up, Mayor Jones. So what happens to the sidewalk that is there now, since it's not in the right spot? Is the city just gonna say that's the responsibility of the landowner? If they want to leave it there, they can. If they want to remove it, that's on them. Or what's the, what's the scoop there?
The sidewalks are in the public right of way. They're just, they're off depending on I looked at the specific engineering on each property, but it's off by a foot or two or six inches here and there along the entire width of it. So it would be removed as part of the project and replaced.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Low.
Okay, I have several questions, I guess, that want to make the most of the three minutes. So it'll be efficient, I hope. So the first question is on the engineering. And then it speaks, and it goes to what this last discussion was about. So I was reading it as really the seventy dollars per linear foot is just for sidewalks, but you're saying it's an equivalent. So whether or not there's a sidewalk there doesn't matter. It's still seventy five, seventy dollars per linear foot is what this proposed lid would be, LID would be, right? So so that, so when I look at this, the engineering report, the thing that stands out to me is we have seven hundred forty eight thousand fifty dollars for total costs. We're saying that three hundred thousand of that will be street SDC. So that's forty percent of the total. So that's money that's already been paid in by somebody, some some citizens, some developers, somebody. We have a hundred forty thousand dollar sidewalk grant that represents nineteen percent of the total. And then we have street fund reserves, one hundred ninety four thousand eight hundred, that's twenty six percent of the total. So we're only looking at fifteen percent of this total amount to be borne by the folks that I guess have the special benefit interest or the benefited beneficial interest. So to me, that's an incredible reduction in the cost imposed upon the citizens that are going to benefit from the street improvements in the sidewalk. So when I look at it that way, I think that the city has made a lot of concessions and has come down to a pretty low level for the folks that live there to spend. My question, though, concern is, are we setting a precedent for other potential LIDs? Are we going to subsidize from public money, people that have already paid into various purses? That, I mean, that kind of concerns me. And I'd like someone to speak to that and finish with my comment here. How many minutes am I? Two minutes, one minute? I don't know. So and I have another question now about the actual resolution itself. So we talk about public hearings. How much time will the public be given to the hearing? Is it going to be restricted or we're going to allow adequate time, whatever that might be?
I think you hit your three minutes.
Yeah. That was only two minutes. Okay.
Twenty, twenty seconds.
Thank you. And Jim, you wanted to speak to that.
Yeah. So assessments will never be precedent setting because each assessment is going to be distinct and different than any other assessment. It's pretty good case law on that. I think really what you're thinking of is gee, pretty good argument for fairness. If you do things in in different ways for different blocks of people, that's purely a political decision. And of course, you can expect a political pressure then that, you know, you ought to treat me that way, too.
Certainly. And was there a question there for Chris too? Chris, did you get any questions?
Second question was about how much time would be allowed in the hearing process and again, in the past, that's there's been some discretion there for for the chair or also for the council as body on that direction. Typically, it's it's three minutes worth of time. If the council wanted to provide for more time, that's again council discretion on on that. And that wouldn't necessarily have to be decided tonight. I think when we talk about what that would look like going forward. We can do that. I think the focus for tonight would be the engineers report and let's get the engineers report to a place that the council feels comfortable approving the report. At least to the point where we can send this to the neighbors, we can have a hearing about it and then the council can regroup following that hearing and make any additional comments, changes, cancellations, etc. So again, I don't want to get too far down the process, but we want to have a report that's, you know, close enough that the council feels comfortable. This is what we would be willing to do going forward. Before it goes out to the neighborhood on, hey, come in and give us your feedback on this engineers report on this proposal.
Right, thank you. Further comments? Councillor Cozy.
And may I introduce an amendment to the engineers report?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to introduce a motion to remove forty thousand dollars from the sidewalk grant listed in the budgetary addendum to the engineers report. And that that amount would be offset by a corresponding increase in the total needed from the street fund reserves. Although as councillor Low pointed out, the assessments here are significantly reduced from those presented in the original report. There's still burdens and a long term resident on a limited income. I'd like to introduce a second motion proposing their residents for whom the assessment exceeds four percent of the assessed value of their home and whose income falls below the median for this area applied to the city for offset.
One moment. And so just to clarify, we can only do the one motion at a time. And so the first motion was to, I just wanted to restate that first motion. And then you can speak to it.
Yes, remove forty thousand dollars from the sidewalk grant listed in the budgetary cost estimate to be offset by corresponding in increase in funding from the street, street fund reserves.
Okay. And do we have a second on that motion? I'm seeing none right now on that. And the second motion was relevant to the first motion, right? And and so any further discussion on the engineers report as it is? Or questions for staff? Also, Bisco.
So I'd like to get a clarification for why we're proposing a change to the forty thousand dollars. Just a little clarification on that, but also I would like to make sure in this process, we have talked about that if there were fees that exceed what these assessments are, that those would be assessed to the property owners. And with construction costs the way that they are, I think it's important that we acknowledge that those could be. So I see on our engineering report anywhere from ten to thirty percent, depending on the report. That could be substantial for some of these property owners. And I would like to say that we cap these assessments at the dollars that are here. And if there's an excessive cost above these dollars, that that's the responsibility of the city to cover those costs. We hard lot like voting for a bill without knowing what's in the bill. I think we shouldn't leave that ambiguity out there for the property owners.
And I have a question. You, I need a clarifying question to your first point. Something about a forty thousand, a change in forty thousand dollars. I don't know what that was referencing.
Wasn't that the amendment that councillor Cozy proposed was the forty thousand dollars from the grant and coming from a different resource? I'm wondering what the reason remaining would be. There was about that forty, forty thousand dollars remain in the grant.
There was no second to that motion.
I was just asking. I was just asking for a clarification for the reason.
Yeah, there was no second on it, so I guess we're, we shouldn't be discussing a motion that's not on the table. And then you were asking a question. Tough, you were asking a question about capping the assessment, um, to that which is stated. Chris, do you wanna speak to, uh, actual costs versus what the engineers' report says and how that um, historically would be expected to, to be applied to different landowners?
This was a straight local improvement district. Um, this would be a kind of a not to exceed amount, so we would go out for bid. If the bid came back higher, um, than what the engineer's estimate was, that we'd need to come back to the city council for approval. In this situation, again, the intent was to have this be a, an equivalent to that amount, and so if that's the case, then this would essentially be the assessment, whether the price came back much higher than this or much lower than this, and the intent would be to have the assessments be the, the seventy dollars per linear frontage. So it's, essentially it is capped at no more than this. Um, if the bids came in a little bit lower, again, we're, the seventy dollars is an estimate, and we're not gonna ask the engineer, ask the contractor, give the exact dollar amount per linear frontage. We're assuming there's a lot of other things built into that, the, the equivalent, uh, the, the equivalent linear frontage of the sidewalk, it's just the standard we're using, try to equitably distribute, uh, the amount of money that we'd like to collect from the neighborhood, uh, as part of the LID.
Got it, thank you. Counselor Lo, oh, I'm sorry, before you get a chance to speak, we have to make sure that everybody else has a chance to speak. So, um, counsel, anybody else, Counselor Layman or Jessica?
I mean, I would like to know what the, where the source of funding was that Counselor Kazi had proposed.
So that motion, uh, that motion had no second, and so.
I understand that, I understand that, but it could inform our discussions now.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Nielsen?
Yes, could, um, could those soft costs be explained a little clearly till I have a better understanding of what they are? Um, they were listed on the budgetary cost estimate.
Yes. Uh, for soft cost of engineering surveying and inspection, so the engineering itself, uh, to have surveyors, that's generally subcontract that will go out and survey the entire property. Um, and then the inspection is the money that we pay for the inspector or for the engineer to be on site at different aspects of the project um, to check, uh, the, the construction, make sure that it's adhering, excuse me, adhering to the design standards. Uh, legal administrative costs, is any, um, any permits that we need? Um, any thing that we need to get recorded, uh, there's some administrative oversight for, uh, the engineering firm as well. Um, and then the contingency is ten percent, that's again to allow for, um, change work orders, uh, things that we find in the ground that we didn't know that we were, that we were there when we started the project. Uh, if we've gotta do some additional demo or removal, um, sometimes you find other pipes in the ground or just things that you gotta move around. Um, so we always had a contingency in there for construction cost.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and Jim, uh, can you just offer some clarity for me? If someone wanted to restate the motion that Counselor Kazi made and then seconded, then you could, we could certainly discuss those things, right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lo.
Thank you, my second three minutes, I'll try to be quicker this time. So, um, just to Counselor Bisco's point, and I, what I understand from, from the city manager. So, Chris, are you saying that regardless of what the costs go or, or are, the real cost, but they're all said and done, the assessment is going to be just the seventy dollars, it will not be higher? Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna be really sure about that, thank you.
Well, without coming back to the council and notifying you, that's what it is, I would imagine we'd go back out, hold another hearing, so it, it wouldn't be allowed to go forward with, you know, the approval, um, for a lower amount.
Okay.
The resolution sets that with, uh, the resolution passes.
Okay, and then Mr. Knutson brought up the, the, the point about the non-remonstrative agreements being not valid anymore, I mean, I, they're valid, I mean, he signed them, they're legal, but what, how do those fit in with this whole discussion?
Uh, the non-remonstrance agreements were essentially the, the Knutsons' part in, in fulfilling their obligation to either do a three-quarter road improvement or to not remonstrate against the formation of a local improvement district. So, in signing those forms, they release their obligation to do the three-quarter road improvement in and of itself and to take part in a local improvement district should wouldn't be established.
Okay, so when we have the public hearing, would they, would the Knutsons be eligible to, to object to the process? Be, or would they not because of the agreements?
It's, Brew came on, I'll let Mr. Brewer answer that question.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that, uh, I don't think anybody's ability to speak is limited by those agreements, but the legal effect of that speech, so, uh, other people could come and, and remonstrate, and that would be counted uh, towards the two-thirds necessary to, uh, pause things for six months. But the Knutsons would not be because they've signed these non-remonstrance agreements.
Okay, so they are valid, they're legal in your opinion?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I just, just wanted to clarify. Okay, and, and I do just wanna say that I do feel for the Knutsons in terms of having had to, uh, go through so many meetings about this. I, I do think that it's been very difficult for them, and I do appreciate that aspect, uh, for them, so I just wanna say that.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, that brings up a really big question, which is if, if we got those remonstrance agreements signed by the Knutsons in lieu of having them do a three-quarter street improvement, I just wanna clarify if that's accurate. If they had not signed those remonstrance agreements, would they be obligated, just like the Heather Glenn subdivision, to do a three-quarter street improvement?
It would have been required to have done the three-quarter road improvement, um, prior to developing their property, prior to issue building permits.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the reason the non-remonstrance agreement was offered is because we foresaw doing a project on North Eleven Street within the next three to five years from the time they were issued. It didn't make sense to piecemeal multiple projects on North Eleven Street, it made sense to do them all at one time.
Is that not what we're doing with Heather Glenn though?
It is, yes. Um, Heather Glenn was a little different, that it was a subdivision, so it was a condition of approval for the subdivision uh, for a site plan, it was not included in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, and I'll just state that I, I think that, uh, if the city is not wanting, uh, local developers to be responsible for doing three-quarter street improvements, I think that we probably should remove that from our code. If we, if this is how we want to proceed from now on, then I think that that's important to get in code so that future landowners will know what's expected of them, but that, um, I don't like what's happened this time, that, you know, someone's responsible for something, but we kind of change it in the middle so that they're actually not responsible for it. And that has implications on people across the city who have wanted to, to, um, install or upgrade their homes in the past, but haven't done so because they realized that it was, it costs money, so, um, I have concerns about that, it's something that I think would the city should, the council should either clarify, um, in code or, uh, figure out a process so that these improvements get accomplished by the actual developers, um, when appropriate, but that's just my comment. And Counselor Kazi?
Um, I'd like to move to approve the amended engineers' report for the proposed Eleventh Street Local Improvement District as presented in pass resolution twenty-two oh three.
And thank you. So we have a motion made by Counselor Kazi and seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, no, I think, uh, it's been a fruitful discussion, I believe, um, approval of the amended report is.
Okay. And further discussion by Counselor Lehman on that?
Yeah, so that's new information to me regarding the three-quarter street improvement being required. Um, I understand the reasoning behind it, but it also, um, by signing those non-remonstrance agreements, we effectively remove the Knutsons from the equation for improving the street, which is not either good or bad, but it definitely is information that we haven't had or discussed since those agreements were signed. I also wanted to state that this is a fundamental change in the way that we do infrastructure work in the city, that it's gonna have widespread ramifications, um, and I believe the Council Brewer indicated that there's not legal precedence for that, but we all know in reality, that's exactly what's gonna happen. So I'd like to encourage the council and staff to pay particular attention to the public hearings that are gonna be coming up because we are in effect saying we're gonna take taxpayer money out of pockets of citizens who do not live on that street and use it to upgrade that street. And again, that's a fundamental change from the way the city has been doing business. Not saying that that's good or bad or indifferent, I'm just saying that it is a fundamental change and it shouldn't be handled on a ad hoc per, uh, incidence basis because that can lead to a lot of the conversations that we've been subjected to, uh, over the past year, year and a half. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Lo.
Yeah, um, so I hear what Counselor Lehman is saying, and I think it's, it's very very important words to hear, I'm gonna vote for this, but I'm gonna not say that I'm, I don't know exactly how it'll come out after the public hearing. I think it's very important we hear from the public and not just the folks that we've heard from. Uh, I would like to encourage all residents that are affected by this to speak, like to hear what they have to say. Again, I think what Counselor Lehman says, uh, has a lot of merit and kind of what I was mentioning in terms of the percentage. You know, we're looking at this lid at fifteen percent of the folks that live there, and eighty-five percent is coming from other folks that have paid into this, so that's my statement.
And I'll just comment, um, that we, in this, in this motion, we are only accepting the engineers' report so that we can then go forward with public hearing is my understanding, Chris, you can correct me, but that we still have the ability to change what, how we choose to, um, you know, implement this LID or not in the future, this is just what we've, this is just trying to go through the public process as far as I can tell. Um, so that we can actually get the information from the public and hear their concerns and then make a, a decision how we wish to move forward at the, in the future. So, Chris, can, is, can you correct me?
Yeah, no, that's, that's correct, I mean, we've taken a lot of steps to get here, but we're definitely not so far down the process that the council can still make changes, pull back altogether. Um, there's a lot of options on the table still, I mean, the city could spend the, the money, some of the money we're talking about, we can improve the street in front of the park and use the part, the, the, uh, the grant that we offer sidewalks to put sidewalk down, say, one side of the street, for example, and we would solve some of the safety concerns that have been discussed already, it would leave a lot of things undone. Um, but again, we've got other streets and within the city that have things undone on them as well, so I think it's important to hear from the people and from the neighborhood. Um, I'm, I'm interested to hear all the voices there. Um, but I agree, depending on how that conversation goes, uh, there could be a lot of other considerations the council can still take on improvements for North Eleven Street.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions, discussion of this motion that's on hand? So, Counselor Bisco.
So Counselor Lehman brings up a good point, and so does Counselor Lo about potential precedent, um, but also funding mechanisms for street infrastructure, and I think this was part of the conversation that was started at the Public Works Committee on alternative funding. I do still think that's a valid discussion that should be had by this council, and that should perhaps be woven into the policy of how we build our infrastructure. Uh, because this conversation isn't gonna go away, we already have other projects scheduled for local improvement districts, and we don't have grant funds the same that we do presently for this street, so I would encourage that perhaps we should be looking at that on the strategic plan. Um, kind of tying into our conversation earlier at the work session.
Thank you very much. And, sorry, let me just get, is anybody who hasn't spoken on this topic want to speak? I believe Counselor Lehman has. Counselor Nielsen, no? Counselor Drott, no? Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, I'm, just wanted to say before we voted that I'm gonna vote no on this, um, because I don't believe that we should use an LID to fund infrastructure improvement if more, or if, if less than fifty percent of the affected properties are in approval, and the only thing that I've heard from anybody involved is that they're not in, they're not in approval, although it's not a formal vote. And so that's why I'm gonna vote no on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of, uh, of approving the engineers' report and scheduling staffs to, to schedule a public hearing? I, that was what the motion was, right?
Um, it was approved, the amended engineers' report for the proposed Eleventh Street Local Improvement District as presented in pass resolution twenty-two oh three.
Great, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say hi. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Motion carries four to three. Great, thank you for that fruitful discussion. Uh, next we have, um, on our old business, an agenda item on meeting information enhancements, a proposal to enhance our meeting implementation, and Chris, who do you want to speak to this?
Uh, we've got, uh, City Recorder Ruth Post on this.
Okay. Well, does, I see your hand up, Counselor Kazi, but I'm gonna head, go ahead and have Ruth introduce this topic first.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm just gonna hit on a few high points of this, um, proposal, it's kind of a package that I've been working on. Um, you've seen this twice, you saw it in your pick, meeting packet last month, and, uh, nothing changed from this month. One of the things that we've definitely heard from the public is that they, Facebook is not, uh, entirely friendly to people who don't have an account. It does everything it can to try to make you have an account, uh, including caching, um, data and then telling you, no, you can't get into the city's free public page without forming an account. And they have to go through steps, clearing their data caches, it's just not very friendly. Um, one of the other things that we've noticed about Facebook is it's, does not provide a method for capturing or exporting closed captions. And, uh, the meeting videos are not linkable. So in studying, comparing it to YouTube, YouTube has some definite advantages, in my opinion. Uh, it does not require a user account, it provides both closed captioning and on a desktop, a running transcript that you can read while the meeting is, uh, playing. It allows export of the closed captioning transcript, now it's not perfect, it's not a, it's not a transcript, it's closed captioning. And so, yeah, they butcher the names, but they get, you know, the majority of it right. Um. I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to go out to the city's new YouTube page that I did set up, but it also gives the ability to timestamp meeting segments. And I think that this is an extremely public friendly thing for us to be able to do is to add those timestamps after the meeting when we upload that into the YouTube. And the public can then just jump straight to the part of the meeting where they care about the agenda item. And it also provides the ability to link segments. So it'll go straight from city council meeting, part one to city council meeting, part two. It also give you the the ability to just go from one meeting to the next. You can just binge watch city meetings all you want. The thing that I want to point out, though, is that the timestamping is more labor intensive. It does require more time on staff's part. I've been doing it in the last couple of months in order to kind of get the feel for it, get the feel for the amount of time. But what I propose is that the city go to action oriented minutes and use the closed captioning as a stored additional part of our meeting archive to for more in depth research into what happened at a meeting. And our online archiving program has also been updated to add the YouTube channel. So what I would propose is that the city go to the action minutes. Effective April first, give us a chance to get information out to the public. Tell them we're going to start streaming on YouTube. We're going to move away from Facebook. We're going to start live streaming on YouTube. We're going to have that closed captioning capability for them, and we're going to have the timestamping capability. And we can put that in our weekly email. We can put it on the city newsletter. We can do Facebook posts so that by April first, the public has a better idea of where to find our meetings. And lastly, I just kind of want to point out that, you know, the the advantages of action only minutes, number one, they're neutral. And they reduce the potential for bias in the minutes. And I think that those are very important aspects for our minutes to always remain neutral as neutral as possible, just providing what happened, what was the council's action, what was the decision? And if you want to go more in depth, then the transcript or not the transcript, the closed captioning will be available. We will add the closed captioning then on our city website as an additional feature for the public to be able to go back and take a look at. Are there any questions?
Yeah. So so Ruth, this is all part of the public record, right? It's not just the action minutes. Everything else is public record. It would be retained as such.
That's correct. The the videos are only required to be retained for a year after the minutes are approved, but the but what we're recommending is that the closed captioning become part of that record with the action minutes and have that retention period. Have that same retention period.
Okay. And just just that we have a motion on the table real quick here. I didn't want to get into a long discussion, but I'll move that the city adopt the retention of action minutes in the corresponding meeting closed captioning as the city's permanent meeting record for all city meetings. So I just made that motion and it was seconded by councillor Low. And councillor Andrade, give your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Ruth. I love that you created a YouTube channel that is makes things more accessible to a lot more people, city, you know, meetings and such. I oh, are the links to the YouTube videos also going to be on the Facebook pages? Like, do you intend to do that?
I hadn't really addressed that in the proposal. Um. I was waiting for the mirror to mute because we're sitting pretty close. I I didn't address that. We we can put the that in the Facebook. Sure. If the the change to action minutes will save staff an immense amount of time and we can be a lot more efficient and yet still provide the public with a better accessibility piece.
Yeah, I am. I'm not as fond of action minutes, although I although I I do appreciate that the at least the discussion points are there and we can try to find them in there. But and I guess I just wanted to state like it is what it is, especially and this is a good thing that you created this. I just was a bit disappointed that the social media ad hoc or social media policy ad hoc committee. Like, we put together a discussion thing and and it's no one's. I don't know. It it would have been nice to actually have had that work session. But it didn't happen. But thank you, Ruth. By the way, that's not on you. That's very much a time thing. I don't know.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion. As stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Great. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is community support request letters. And oh, yes, got it. Chris, did you want to speak to this?
And thank you, Mayor. So as the council recall and appreciate Chelsea writing up the agenda summary on this one. She's going to be here with us tonight. But we've received, we we put some money into the budget last year, as you recall, for the council to be able to respond to inquiries from the community. So it's the line item for community support. We've received our first couple of letters requesting community support. And so it's triggered the question from staff level whether to bring these to the city council on a case by case basis as they come in. Or to see on a policy level if the council wants to set up a more formal request where, you know, request for for funding could go out. We could receive requests and evaluate those at one time and then do the funding that way. So I think included in kind of the last paragraph there kind of pros and cons of either way, right? But you know, having one one time of the year to request funding may work for some organizations. It may be less beneficial for others that aren't in season or aren't really thinking about fundraising at that time. But it also, you know, may allow for prioritizing where the funds go a little bit better, rather than just first come for served kind of method, which but it would kind of lead to if you don't have a set time. So just looking for some policy direction. If you'd like us to start working up a policy, we can do that. If you'd rather just have the money sitting there and available as they come in, then we just need that direction and we could deal with the two specific requests we got that I included in the packet. I can deal both of those tonight individually.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Low.
Okay, so responding to your request, Chris. I think we need a policy. There are several things when I look at this that I think it's great that the city council has allocated some money. But so that was as of maybe July first of last year. So here it is March fourteenth now. And these are the first two requests we've had. I just wonder how much we're really getting the word out that this is available, what the parameters are. So that's I think we need policy around that. I noticed these two requests are appealing and they talk about businesses. Have your business support us. Get your notoriety. But we're not a business. We're a municipality and we have our funds that come from our citizens. So I'm not sure that's appropriate for us to just give out money. Now, of course, we have our social service agency policy, but that money comes from state revenue taxes that we get and we allocate thirty five percent of that towards the social service agencies. And those are all five oh one C threes. I'm not sure if either one of these is. I do have a little insight on the the Hall of School Hall of Fame, and there's some they say that there's tax deductible, but I'm not totally sure that's been fleshed out yet. But and and I don't know, first come for serve versus receiving deciding. So basically, I I say we need a policy and I would not. I don't think we should allocate any money to these folks. Maybe the Girl Scouts need some. I don't know. I think we just need a policy.
Thank you, councillor Low. Councillor Andrade.
A couple of things. I completely agree. We need a policy, a way to avoid that. You know, the not being able to have off season groups apply for funding, we make it a biannual application date or something like that. Or quarterly if it if need be. And then and yeah, I I think this is very necessary considering what happened with the transient lodging tax and tax. And then also I had a question for Chris in with the Fulham softball letter. I I think this was actually meant for the frolic. And so I just wanted to let you know.
There's a toppy they requested from both, but you're right. I think I grabbed the wrong one. I got one for the frolic I wanted to see. So.
Gotcha. Okay. Let's get to now.
Thank you. They know where to find me.
Any other comments or questions? I'll just state that my my feelings are very well aligned, strongly aligned with councillor Low on this one. Seeing no further discussion, there's no recommended motion and we're not seeing a motion unless someone had one or otherwise we can.
I'll just kind of state a consensus. Everybody the consensus for staff to go and put a policy together and bring that back to the council. Okay. Do we want that to go right to the finance admin committee or just straight back to the council to consider?
I think going to the finance admin can be a good first step myself. Councillor Bisco, you have a comment on this particular agenda item?
I do. I'd like to recommend that we look at funding mechanisms, kind of like county does, so the small the block grants that they do. I can't think of the correct acronym, but the block grants and or the notice of funding opportunities. It's just one lump. This is when it's available. It's very publicly noticed and it's a very simple process that they they kind of keep packing in one package. So we're not having to deal with this at every meeting potentially.
Yeah. Great. And so we looks like is the financing admin the first the good spot for it to land first? Everyone agree with that? Thumbs up. Okay. Great. We'll move forward with that. Next item on the agenda is Chris, the city and this the state and the city's state of emergency is set to expire. He's trying to give us a quick update on that.
Yeah, so the state's state of Oregon state emergency expires at the end of the month. As of April first, that'll have ended. The the resolution that the city council passed declaring a state emergency within the city allowed the city to apply for some funding, gave the city manager some additional duties and and authority. The but it also included the language that it would sunset or it would terminate essentially at the time that the state state of emergency ended. And so just a notification to the city council, that'll be the end of this month. And then it included some language in there about meeting in person and returning to in person meetings. Now, the mask mandate has been lifted. And again, some need some direction from council because we would want to advertise returning to in person meetings. And I think also you've got a lot of subcommittees and commissions and whatnot that are looking to the council for direction on whether they're going to be allowed to meet in person or not, what the expectation is going to be going forward on attendance at in person meetings. I will just say from experience that we've had here and also from experiences, talking with a lot of other cities and city managers and how this is working, that the hybrid meeting works, but it doesn't work well. I've yet to see or hear somebody who says, yep, we've nailed it. We've got it down. It works perfectly. There are always hiccups with hybrid meetings. So my recommendation, just based on that, just the the added awkwardness that a hybrid meeting meets, although, you know, we can do it as needed, but I would strongly recommend the city council consider you know, all but a requirement, I think, as Chelsea put in the language here. You know, that you the expectation is that if you're in town that you meet in person, you know, if you're out of town or you're otherwise unable to attend. Obviously, then we would go the hybrid method, but that'd be an exception to the rule, not necessarily the rule. So again, council's prerogative. We've got staff recommendation there, but we just need some direction from the council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Lehman.
Yeah, Chris, I know our last meeting, we are at the budget committee meeting, we talked about allocating some funds for reconfiguring this council chambers and updating some of the technology. Do we have an idea on how long that process would take to implement?
So I think there'll be some phases. We've already purchased two really nice area capturing microphones and speakers that I think will work well in the layout. In fact, Mayor Jones is sitting in a new configuration that we've got to try to try out the system a little bit. He's using his personal laptop and camera, but there's a second camera kind of zoomed out a bit that I think would capture that half of the table. We'd have a second camera behind that would capture the other side of the table. So I think with two cameras and to the two microphones and speakers that we've captured. We're pretty darn close. The actual construction modifying the diaphragm stuff, we haven't started any of that work yet. Other than just some preliminary thoughts on how that would lay out and putting some folding tables up to kind of see what that would look like. So I I think a return to in person meetings and being able to capture audio and video, we could do as early as next month. But it wouldn't be a diast that would be constructed. It would probably be a folding chairs until the dice could be built.
Thanks. Councillor Andrade.
I I don't know if anyone saw who has zoomed that there's this new program that they just released that that's geared towards hybrid meetings. Hopefully, that might be helpful. I'm concerned that if we don't, if people want to meet in person, that there will because it's difficult to have a hybrid meeting as of now, that it will be excluding those who can't make it there or for whatever reason. And I know I won't won't be attending in person. COVID is still dangerous. It still harms people. It still is a vascular disease and people, they're expecting people to have early onset dementia now from if they got COVID, even people who don't have symptoms asymptomatic cases or don't go in the hospital. So no judgment to anyone who wants to meet in person. I just, I'm not willing to do it.
Anyone else have any thoughts or concerns with the idea? Councillor Bisco.
So I too just want to point out that we don't know the there's no predictability on COVID and what might be coming down the pipe or what the next version is or what the next pandemic might look like. And in the interest of that kind of emergency preparedness, I'd like to see us move forward with being able to do successfully hybrid models and purchasing the equipment to do so and do so well. I think it's important for public engagement. Just as a side note, the city of Corvallis was just talking about this topic and they have committed to moving forward with doing very whatever, a higher level of hybrid meetings. It was very clear and very evident to them that normal meetings, they might see twenty five people, but in during the shutdown and the pandemic and hybrid meetings, they're seeing as many as sixty five people attending these meetings and have had folks reach out to them and thank them so. and have had folks reach out to them and thank them so much because they are unable to make normal meetings. And so we now have a different level of public engagement. So in the interest of accessibility and planning forward, in case we need to move to more hybrid models or better better technology, I would encourage that we make that expenditure and that we continue to do a high-quality hybrid meeting.
And just to distinguish the difference between a live-streamed meeting versus a hybrid meeting. You know, I think the the increased attendance is mostly because of the in-stream, the live-streamed meetings. The hybrid really is more about the people that are participating in the meetings and those like are all the seven of us and the staff. But just making that distinction. I'm fully in support of the suggestion. I am happy, I know that hybrid meetings, in my experience, are horrible. There's nothing I like about a hybrid meeting, but I do like the live streaming of the meetings. And I would really appreciate if we could do the in-person meetings. I think even having one counselor be distant is just really challenging. It's not pleasant for anybody. But that's just my two cents. Did anyone else have a comment before Councilor Bisco goes? Councilor Nielsen?
I as one think there's a huge difference between hybrid and in-person meetings. Some of the committees I'm on, I'm going back to in-person masked, of course, in the last few weeks, but in person as well. And the difference in productivity and I think just overall atmosphere of collaboration is different in an in-person meeting than in the hybrid meetings that I've attended over time. And so I am very much in favor of going back to in-person meetings.
Thank you. Councilor Kazi?
I do am in favor of returning to in-person meeting, but I I would like to revisit the issue perhaps at the close of our next meeting, so that we're assessing how well it is or is not going.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else before we have Counselor Bisco speak again? Okay, Councilor Bisco?
So I just want to make the point that I think that we do need to pursue whichever version you want to call it. If we do hybrid meetings, there's ways to do more video like close up like we have right now in that hybrid space. There's technology that allows that. I'm very cautious of the idea that we might be excluding just by not having the conversation. Folks that have ability, different levels of ability and being able to access city council meetings. So we have extra upper dollars. We also have strategic planning conversations. It would serve our community better if we could do a, whether it's hybrid, whether it's live streaming or it's all of the above, making sure that there's accessibility to this process, I think is very prudent.
Thank you. So do we have a motion? Chris, you want to, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, there's the intent here would be that we'd be maintaining the current level of accessibility. Any visitors would still be able to come. There's new state law that states that we're required to provide an opportunity to participate in meetings remotely, which we'll continue to do. That doesn't, by the state laws, it doesn't necessarily have to be video, it can be phone, which we've always provided that. At least in the last, I don't know, with ten plus years or so, we've allowed a phone number for people to be able to call in and participate, provide testimony in the meeting. So we've done that long before covid hit. We would add the feature, being able to either do that by phone or by video. So now that's going away, I think what we're talking about here is the expectation of participants in the in the meeting, or the committee members themselves, and what the expectation is going forward. You know, in preparing this memo, you know, we had some conversations about what the actual recommendation would be. I do note there, I'm not saying we're not going to do hybrid meetings, I'm saying hybrid meeting should be the exception. And when people are in town and available to come to person, that would be the expectation. That recommendation wasn't made without consideration of council members' individual comfort level, you know, seeing different council members at events and at other meetings and attending other things has led me to believe that attending a council meeting would be that different than attending a say a small cities luncheon, for example, or, you know, a media in the legal Oregon cities or any other other meeting that we've seen members of the council at in the past. So this would be a council meeting, it's a little bit more time. Again, you could still be spread out, you could still face masks, but again, it's for the council to decide. I'm not going to tell anybody how they need to protect themselves and to be safe. But the recommendation was made with note of what we've seen from the council in the past.
Thank you. So there's a recommended motion. Does anyone have a motion? Councilor Nielsen?
Okay, I moved direct staff to advertise and set up for in-person meetings effective April first, twenty twenty-two and require the committee members attend in person unless out of town or otherwise unable to attend in person.
Thank you. We have a second. So we have a motion made by Councilor Nielsen and Councilor Kazi, Beat you to it, Councilman Lehman. So we have a second by Councilor Kazi. Any further discussion or you want to speak to your motion?
I think it's pretty self.
It's fine, just want to offer the opportunity. Councilor Bisco?
So I just want to clarify that last statement. So if we're in town and we don't feel safe because of what the pandemic may or may not do, because they are predicting a spike after going to no masking. Is this motion stating that we're required to attend in person? Because that's what I thought I heard. So I'm just asking for clarification.
The motion was to require the committee members to attend in person unless they're out of town or unable to attend in person.
And who will decide unable to attend in person? It's a matter, we just spent two years in a shutdown. It's a matter of safety for some individuals of this council and some of our committee members as well. So I think clarifying what that means or who will be the decider of what that means is important.
Right. I do think there's some subjectivity there. But I am interested in what hearing what others think. Councilor Lehman, did you have a comment on this or do you have an additional comment?
I had a different comment, so I wait.
Councilor Kazi, did you have a comment on the response to it, Councilor Bisco?
I do, I'd like to make a motion to amend to state that unless out of town or otherwise uncomfortable attending in person or uncomfortable or unable. Some some language that will give the individual the option.
Do I have a second on that? So we have motion to amend by Councilor Kazi and seconded by Councilor Andrade. And did you want to speak to the amend, motion to amend, Councilor Kazi?
No, perhaps someone else has has better wording to suggest.
No, I think that's, I think what you stated is fine. What I'm trying to think of some of the problems that occur when we live stream meetings like this, and I don't know how it's going to be in YouTube. Does it look the same as it does in Zoom? In my mind, it would be good because having one face that's giant and then a whole bunch of faces sitting around a dais is problematic. In in these types of hybrid meetings, I'm wondering if there's some way to make it so that there's some equity in how the displays occur, whether it be, I mean, I don't know, that's my, that's one of my concerns is that it's, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right to have one face be, you know, half of the screen and then seven other, six other faces be really small. But and I know Councilman Lehman has another point. Councilor Low, did you have a response in to this comment?
Yeah, yeah, I think I think we're all adults and we need to give ourselves the benefit of the doubt. And if any one of us feels that it's not our best interest to be someplace in person, and I think we need to honor that. I assume that we can come to the meetings in person, so wear masks as we want, is that correct? I mean, that's an individual choice, so I'm glad that Councilor Kazi made that amendment. Because I think we each have to be our own judge of our actions and be responsible about it.
Sure. So we have a motion on the table to amend. All in favor of amending the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose to the motion to amend, please raise your hand and say nay. Abstention?
Wait, is it the amendment to the motion or is it the motion as amended?
It's always the amendment to the motion first, and then we will vote on the full amended motion later.
That's not always true.
Okay, thank you for that. So we, I think you abstained, is that correct, Councilor Andrade?
If it's just the amendment, yes. Or I'm voting yeah.
So motion carries unanimously to amend the motion. And then, Councilman Lehman, you had a comment?
I did, I did. I would like to encourage us to go back to in-person meetings as much as possible. The collegiality that you get when you're in a room together, I think would lend itself well to this body and also to the subcommittees and and other various public facing events that we have. Understanding that some counselors and members of the public do not feel comfortable in that environment. And that's why we have the alternative of doing video or telephone participation. So I'm intending to vote for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this topic, on this motion? All in favor of passing the amended motion? Do you want to state their amended motion? Yes, let's state the amended motion.
I move to direct staff to advertise and set up for in-person meetings effective April one, twenty twenty-two and require that committee members attend in person unless out of town or uncomfortable attending in person.
Thank you. All in favor of passing the motion? As stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? A motion carries unanimously. And with that, let's, it's eight twenty, we have about an hour left in our agenda, let's go ahead and take a break until eight twenty-eight. We have five minutes. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome back, thank you very much. And as we get started here, I just thought we maybe I'd just like to jump into, I'm going to move something around on the agenda real quick. F one, let's just jump to F one on the agenda and discuss the ordinance number eight sixty-two adopting the comprehensive plan, chapter one, before we get into new business. So, Chris, do you want to go ahead and introduce that or Jim?
I'll go ahead and read the ordinance.
Great.
Which is ordinance number eight six two, adopting comprehensive plan, chapter one, citizen involved. Which is ordinance number eight six two, adopting comprehensive plan, chapter one, citizen involvement.
Thank you very much for that. And do we need to do a roll call vote on that or, Chris, do you want to speak to it? Any questions?
Yeah, we, the council talked about this last month, last month, I think, pretty. Asked a couple of questions and and made the motion to bring this back for consideration, so I'm happy to answer any questions on the ordinance language if the council has any, if not, we can direct the city reporter to do a a vote by roll call.
Are there any questions or comments on agenda item F one? Chris?
Sorry, I I just want to commend the the planning commission and other work on this. Again, our our previous chapter one of citizen involvement was all of like two policies and a lot of vagueness on committee for citizen involvement, and I just think this, the planning commission did a really nice job of pulling this together, giving some explanations and clear definitions and setting out what I believe are some really good policies moving forward on making sure that the public is involved in land use decisions in the city of Florence going forward, so I just want to give that appreciation and and a job well done out to the planning commission.
Yeah, I was really excited to see it come forward after being under being on their agenda for or being tasked to them for quite a while, it's great to see it come out. Happy to have him working on it. Seeing no comments, Ruth, can you give us a roll call vote?
Point of order, Mayor, I think there are some comments, I know I have one.
I, I was waiting for your comments, go ahead, Counselor Andretti had her hand up first.
I, um, I might have missed this, I didn't have my earbud in and missed the time, sorry about that. Um, did we talk about number, the missing number six? On page two of four. In the chapter one, we were supposed to, I believe we voted to approve adding the sixth. What is that, hole? Yeah. It's at the very top.
I was told by council, by Ruth Post, that it was the one on funding.
Oh, yes.
Lines thirteen and fourteen on. So, yes. And Councilor Bisco, you had a comment?
So are we? My comment is is also related to that, I don't see line in thirteen and fourteen. Actually, Counselor Andrade, I I spoke over you if you wanted.
No, it's okay, I, um, I was just wondering, like, is that going to be addressed then? Those missing lines? Page two of four.
Page two of four.
During the discussion at the last meeting, the Councilor Bisco requested that the addition on page one of four lines thirteen and fourteen to add provide adequate financial support for planning. Was there somewhere else it was supposed to go? Because I don't recall that in the motion to amend.
Oh, I thought that was supposed to be number six and number six in the page two of four. So it would be line sixteen on that page.
I think.
Did I misunderstand that?
I think it was originally proposed on line six. But then we modified that and the motion.
Line sixteen.
The mayor, may I clarify? Because I do know what it was, it wasn't line six, it's bullet point number six or number six of the Oregon's land use planning goals, citizen involvement recommendations. Or I should say the requirements of does ask that there is funding allocations made for the citizen involvement advisory committee. If that's what we're calling it here, the CCI, we call it here, which is a little bit differently, but it is a funding mechanism that is part of that process. So the number six was because it was number six of the the list from the state.
Can I make a suggestion? How about somebody make a motion to amend to add the lines? Specifically state the line number and what text you want added.
And I think that that discussion resulted in the addition of that text on lines thirteen and fourteen on page one of four. In that last meeting, is that correct, Councilor Bisco?
So that's not my recollection, my recollection was to add a number six because we had numerically listed them prior and it aligns with every the first five, but it doesn't capture number six. I can look it up, but I can't do it quickly, so if you want to know what the text is, is I would recommend it as I would have, I read it off the site.
No, I think, I think we already, I think we already had a motion on the table, we already discussed this in the last meeting, we can just let.
So it didn't get into this, though, that we're voting on this evening, it's not there.
That's what I'm hearing from you and from Councilor Andrade, and we're gonna double check that. Should we?
It, it, it seems like, uh, I would just follow the city recorder's recommendation, which is let's, let's make an amendment to add a number six on line sixteen of page, I'm sorry, two of four. And if if nobody knows exactly what that number six was from the state policy, I think you could say, using the language from number six of the state policy.
That works for me.
And so.
Someone would like to make that motion? Yeah. Councilor Lehman?
I would like to move that we add the language from the state policy number six to line sixteen of page two of four of this policy or of this chapter.
Hey, do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Bisco. Motion was made by Councilman Lehman. Any further discussion? Councilor Bisco?
Just for clarification, the language actually reads on number six, it's on goal one, citizen involvement at Oregon.gov. It reads adequate financial support for public involvement efforts.
Thanks.
So not suggesting we change the motion, but just letting you know for the record here and for anyone joining us in this meeting, that's what it says.
Thank you. So all in favor of passing the motion as the amendment as mentioned, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now, do we can do a roll, a roll call vote on the amended ordinance? Okay.
David Low.
Aye.
Teresa Nielsen.
Aye.
Jessica Andrade.
Hi.
Catherine Bisco.
Yes.
Ruth Cossi.
Yes.
Matt Lehman.
Yes.
Charles Jones.
Yes.
Yes. You're great, thank you. And now we will return to our previously scheduled agenda items. Agenda item E one, the general fund fee sunset, Chris, do you want to speak to that?
I'll let our, I'll let our finance director speak to that.
Okay. Mike.
Evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. I look like I'm got, I have the next four agenda items. First one we're gonna start out with is the general fund fee. It is scheduled to sunset on June thirtieth. Count, our council, Jim Brewer, has advised us to bring counsel bring a ordinance to council in first of July to let it go sunset. And so basically, you know, and the finance admin committee recommends that it says it's a sunset as planned. So basically, for budgetary purposes, we need to move forward in the next budget without that as a revenue source. So this is basically just a uh, an update to council to let you know what what's gonna happen and we're gonna move forward. So there's really no motion and did we have any questions on this?
David?
Yeah, not a question, but just a statement that basically this is a promise kept by the council that originated the general fund fee at ten dollars back in the day and we committed to the citizens that that would not be for everything, it would sunset on schedule, it has. In fact, we actually reduced it from the plan five dollars a year ago to four dollars, so I would say the councils have done even exceeded that, so the citizens should be pleased and our financial condition is that much more enhanced.
Thank you for that, Councilor Low. Appreciate it. Any other comments on this agenda item? There's no action necessary by the council. Excellent. So with that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Nothing, go ahead.
So with that, we actually have a finance and admin chair, David Low, who's going to discuss the utility rates coming out of the financial of the utility rate conversation coming out of the finance and admin committee.
And, um, thank you. Yeah, so we we looked at the water rate, sewer rate, street utility fee and storm drain fee in light of the upcoming budget year. And if you'll remember, especially with water, last year, late in the year, with the receipt of the twelve million dollars to help with the water treatment plant, council voted to decrease the amount of the water utility fee. Staff came back to us with the proposal to actually increase it again, the committee is determined that that would not be appropriate. And it's not, no one really had an appetite to do that, it wouldn't have been right, I think, for the citizens. Wouldn't send the right message and it really isn't necessary, so we did not come back with any increase to the rate. We do agree that there's an inflation factor, and so we've agreed to a two percent increase there. And then for the sewer rates, we talked about it, I believe a two percent increase there. Yeah, the two percent. No, actually I take that back, and the water rates, Mike, did we actually do the two percent or no?
No, we held.
We did not.
We held them flat, Councilor Low.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
We held them at this, uh, the rate that it currently is, there's no change.
Okay, good, good, so I, so I misspoke there, so no change, we wanted to to keep it that way. The sewer rates, we did agree that the two percent inflationary factor should be added. Residential rate, that's a fifty-five cent per month increase. And then for multi residential, it's also the fifty-five percent increase. And then for storm drain, your street utility fees, we have no increases. That's right, so that's what the committee has come back to with to recommend to the council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the committee chair or ourselves or Mike, Councilman Lehman?
Yeah, just in in light of the previous discussion that we had about the the eleventh street LID and the depending, pending the outcome of that, we may find ourselves in a situation where the city is going to be, for all intents and purposes, obligated to upgrade a bunch of streets on the, off the street. The street fund reserves, and I'm wondering if there was any discussion about that when the recommendation was made to leave the street utility fees as they are, thanks.
The, there was not. And Mike, is that something that that you had considered, or maybe you and Chris had talked about?
Yeah. Chris, you want to speak to it, or you want me to speak to it, Chris? I just had a quick, just historically, last year, if the council recall, that street fee increased from four dollars a month to eight dollars a month. To get us up to eight, we felt that was pretty substantial from one year to the next. And so that that kind of weighed into staff's recommendation to leave the street fee at that eight dollars for this year. And, you know, see where things pan out this year with the capital improvement plan and then look for, you know, any needed increases in the future, but for this year, that was to leave it flat.
Thank you. Go ahead, David.
So, also just to to say that a recommendation is made, which I strongly agree with, and I think the committee does, that a utility rate study should be considered to substantiate any future rates. But that's for the water, but we may want to do something like that for the other services too. With the water, it was recommended that we do that after the treatment plant, new treatment plant is up and running.
Thank you. And the Councilor Bisco?
So I'd like to still ask my question, but Councilor Low, could you expand on what those studies would would encompass and what they would provide as information so that I understand that better?
Sure, the, what I just referred to, Councilor Bisco, the okay, well, I don't have any detailed information really to give, I I think it would be well, there'd be something that would assign to staff and it would encompass comparisons, some sort of statistical measurements and anything of value that we can bring it back to the council to make an informed decision. Uh, can you, Mike or Chris, give me more flesh that out a little bit?
Yeah. As I'm new to Philomena, City of Newport, we went through a rate study. Must have been five years ago, and so that's pretty recent to me. We went through water, sewer and storm water, and I think we had some streets involved. And we did cost of service analysis, we did, we looked at what we had going for all the tank, the the needs of the of the city, of all the residents and the commercial. And they looked at comparisons like Councilor Low noted. And it's a pretty in-depth process, it took us about a year to do it. So it's not, well, I wouldn't say a year, it was like six months, but it felt, it felt like a year. So I, basically, they gave us, they gave us a ten-year plan and really it's out thirty years where we could plan a lot of borrowings, we looked at our debt levels and we brought everything imaginable into that and it's like I said, the end product, we came up with rates that were solid, we had some kind of background backup to it. And our debt, we could plan our debt for the next ten, ten to twenty years, so it's pretty in-depth. I I don't know if we're just gonna do this water here or if we're gonna do the whole structure. I would say the whole structure would probably need to be looked at at the same time.
And Mike, I I would assume that as we get closer to that or where we do it, you'd bring back more information of specifics of maybe what we're looking at and and, uh, you know, finer points of what you just said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Chris?
Part of the strategy there was to get the water treatment plant behind us and constructed. And then we could really take a good look, as part of this look is looking at future projects and the cost of future projects. And with the water treatment plant being so large and the reservoir being so large, it's gonna skew all of that information, so once we get that big project behind us, the thought was to hire a consultant to come and look at that, because they will look at those future projects. And as Mike has kind of alluded to here, they'll look at at what years in the future are you gonna need to borrow some additional money or seek some additional funds in order to do these future projects? How much do you put on utility ratepayers to pay for those improvements? How much do you anticipate STC has contributed to those? You know, how much of that's going to come from grant funding? So there's some assumptions you build into that. But really, the intent is to come back with a utility rate schedule that, you know, it's not a defined rule from year to year, but at least it gives you a little bit better guideline, looking out the next several years. On what utility rates are going to do and how much they're going to fluctuate. Trying to be consistent and setting expectations. It ends up being a really good tool for the city to use.
Thank you.
They they aren't free. They do cost money. So the intent was to include that into this fiscal year's budget so that. You know, sometime first of the year, next year, we could take that project on. The first part of the year to the mid part of next year, but we go ahead and budget for this fiscal year. 2022, 2023, so.
Which begs the question, and that will be part of the strategic plan, one of those action items type of thing.
I believe it's in there already.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, there's some general language about doing some analysis and comparison when before raising utility rates, so.
Thank.
It's not specific to all utility rates at once. It's kind of a long sum, but there's some general guidelines in there that. As a as a strategy, we want to make sure that we're competitive and we're only collecting as much as we need to. But that we're not shorting ourselves on future needs of the infrastructure either.
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
Mayor, point of order, I'd like to actually ask my question, please, or make my comments, please.
I'm going to make a motion first. And the committee approves and recommended to the city council, I'm sorry. I I move that the city council approve utility rates and fees as presented in attachment A effective July 1 of 2022. So I have my motion made by myself and seconded by Councilor Nielsen. And then I see that Council Bisco has a comment or question.
So my commenter and question preceded that motion, but I'd like the allowance to have these comments made then. First, I'm concerned that we're not looking at the long range of our increases holistically. We do it every year and we're not, we're siloing the discussion. Next year will be a big levy year, very likely impacting Philomen between the school district proposed levy and the justice system improvement project levy. We also know that we have significant infrastructure needs, and I believe that all of the funding needs and expectations of cost are laid out in the water system master plan and the sewer master plan and potentially. I don't know about the streets specifically. What I was going to do was make a motion that we move the rate study forward to a high priority in our strategic planning. But I wasn't given that opportunity. So I'd like, Council Brewer, can you tell me how that might work now that we're stuck in the middle of another motion?
Well, you addressed the motion that's currently on the table. You could, or currently before the council. You could table it. You could decide, okay, I have a motion that I'd like to make, but you wait until this particular, the motion that's in front of the council is resolved and then you. You bring up your motion again.
Thank you for that, Council Brewer. That helps. It just the other motion kind of complicated this one, but thank you for that clarification.
So any further discussion on the motion at hand? Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I reviewed my motion. I forgot attachment B. That should be part of the also on the resolution itself. It should probably be on the. Now, therefore, it should be attachment A and B. As be established because A is for residuals, B is for multi-users commercials. I don't want to miss that. Sorry.
Got it. So I. So I will move to amend my motion. So that it reads, I moved that the city council approved the utility rates and fees as presented in attachments A and B. Effective July 1 of 2022. So have it seconded by Council Low. I'm all in favor of amending the motion.
Point of order.
Sure.
So I understand you're amending your emotion, but the actual resolution doesn't mention anything about attachment B. So. I don't know how procedurally to move forward with that because your motion didn't specifically reference the resolution. So. Maybe we could get a little clarification on that.
Sure. Jim, do you have a thought?
Someone could move to amend the amendment to include the resolution.
Council, I mean, you want to do.
Was there a second to your motion?
Yeah. Second by Council Low. So do Councilor Kozie, do I see a hand up to amend? Make a motion.
Still moved.
Got it. Thank you for that. And I'll second that. So. First off, we have a motion to amend my amend my motion to amend. All in favor of amending my motion to amend, please raise your hands. Say aye. I all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. All extensions, please raise your hand. So we have motion carries five to one to one. And then we have the motion to amend as stated. By myself. All in favor of the motion to amend.
Point of order.
Yes.
Can we please have the motion? Read back to it.
Yep. The amended motion would read. I move that the city council approve the utility rates and fees as presented in attachment A and B effective July 1 of 2022.
Thank you.
Of, oh, of resolution 22 dash 04. All in favor of passing or making the. Carrying the motion to amend the original motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So motion carries five to two. And with that, we have a motion on the table. The final motion on the table. Is as I just stated. So all in favor of care passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. I. All opposed, but the motion is.
Resolution or?
The motion is that. I move that the city council approve the utility rates and fees as presented in attachment A effective July 1 of 2022. In resolution 22 dash 04.
But you amended it to add B.
B.
And also to add B to the resolution.
Right.
Well, B, B's in the resolution.
No, B specifically isn't in the resolution, at least not in the text that I'm seeing.
It says where is the attached schedule B reflects right up above now, therefore.
Right. And then now, therefore, it says Philomen that the user fee set forth in attachment A be established to the effect. It doesn't say anything about attachment B.
Got it.
Have that amendment in there.
But we did amend it to say that, yes.
So. All in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Point of order. Again, what is this? The resolution that we're voting on?
We're voting on the utility rate, setting the utility rates.
Didn't we just do that?
No, we haven't done that. We've only been voting to amend. Amend the motion and the resolution.
It's just, I didn't hear that earlier.
This one would approve the resolution. So all in favor of. Passing the motion.
Do you have a point of order, Councilman Lehman?
All in favor of passing the resolution as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. I all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Motion carries four to three. Okay. And Council Bisco, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
I would. I move that we. Prioritize a rate study for water, sewer and streets. I don't, well, streets, yes. By placing it on the strategic plan and allocating funding in this budget cycle.
So yeah, a motion made by Council Bisco and seconded by Council Low. Would you like to speak to that, Council Bisco?
I will just restate my concern that we are setting rates without really knowing what the forecast looks like for our expenditures. The water master plan. States several, I don't know anymore. $15 million, give or take, and that was several years back to complete the the water priorities. There's three of them. Further and the water treatment plant, we already, we have expectations of what it will cost. So I don't understand the reason why we would wait to embark on this rate study. When the sewer infrastructure or master plan, excuse me, was put in place, that was right around $17 million of funding. And of course, inflationary is real. That's why we're having a 2% discussion this evening. I think it's imperative that we know what our expenditures are and how we can budget forecast them in the future. Being sensitive also to the levies that will impact our taxpayers as well in 2023.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Chris?
Yeah, I appreciate the desire to get as much information as possible.
Stop.
Council Bisco, you can just let Council Chris speak, or sorry, City Manager speak.
Just from a staffing standpoint, Mike's just come on board. We've hit him up with preparing the budget. And as well as getting his feet underneath him on financing. So just realistically speaking, I don't see this being a project that we can take on. In the short term, definitely not this current fiscal year, like between now and July, I just don't see that happening. So my recommendation would be to not approve this motion, but we can definitely put it in the budget for next year. And probably about, you know, maybe about this time next year or again, first of the year next year to be able to start. Getting under contract with a consultant to get this worked down. But I just don't see us physically being able to do that any earlier with a current staffing level.
Thank you for that. Those thoughts. Count any further, Councilor Low?
So just to clarify, Chris, you couldn't do it before the end of this fiscal year, but you, we could do it 22, 23 fiscal year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other folks before? We go back to Council Bisco?
Yes, so I just want to clarify with.
A moment. The Council Nielsen, did you have your, were you getting ready to say something?
I was just wondering whether we could amend that motion to maybe have it read the fiscal year 22, 23 rather than immediate.
You want to make a motion to amend?
I would. I'd like to make a motion to amend that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that motion amend. So now the motion reads that it would be added to the budget for next fiscal year. Or no, it doesn't. The motion is to amend is to add the language that it would go to next fiscal year. All in favor of amending the original motion. Not passing the original motion, just amending it. Please raise your hand and say aye. I all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Okay, motion carries six to one. And so Council Bisco, you had a comment?
My comment was my apologies for my mic being on. I have a pet in here that was misbehaving. So. If it sounded like stop, that's in fact what I said, but it was to a four-legged friend sitting off on the sidelines here.
Thank you. So all in or any further discussion on the on this motion? All in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and or as amended, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to now speak to item E3. On the topic of nonrepresented employee colas and Finance and Admin Committee Chair, Council Low, you want to introduce that topic?
Uh, yes, yes. So I think this is the last year of. The union contract will be renegotiated. Next year, now something to say about that at the moment. But in order to maintain equity between the union staff and those. Staff who are not part of the union, not part of management. Were proposing that the 3% color that the union folks get is also given to the. Other staff, as I mentioned, to maintain parity and equity. And one of the things that we stressed at the committee meeting was that we, before we go into negotiations for next year. That the council, we have a heads up and when that's going to happen so that we can have some input or some better understanding ahead of time. I think in the past. We found out after the fact that it was kind of a done deal. So we'd like to know ahead of time just what the. What the inputs are and how it's going to be approached. So. There's a recommended motion, and I'll make it. I move that the city council approved. 3% cost of living increase effective July 1, 2022 for the nonrepresented staff.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Council Low and seconded by Council Nielsen. Any further discussion, Councilman Lehman?
Yes, I'd like to move to amend the motion to also include language regarding a salary. Review, comprehensive salary review by an outside third party also happened during the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. In anticipation of the upcoming. Renegotiations with the unions.
Sure. And so we had a motion to amend by Council Lehman and seconded by Council Nielsen. Any further discussion, Councilor Low? You want to speak to your motion or the amended motion now?
Yeah, I think I think that's a good, a good move. I just clarification, is this for all staff, including senior staff, city manager? Or so it's everybody?
That would be my intention, yes. Everybody who gets paid by the city gets, that position gets reviewed. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question about that for staff. Chris, is that? Is that easily, is that something that's reasonable to to do a salaries survey of all staff? Is that? In your experience or Mike?
Yeah, we can do it. There's consultant firms that do that. I think we looked at that a few years ago and the council that time opted to just have staff to an internal one. With the with the finance director Swanson. But if we want to do a third party, there's lots of companies that can do that.
Yeah, thank you. And Councilor Low? Actually, does anybody else have a comment before we get to go back to Councilor Low? Question? None. Councilor Low, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think this is important too, because in the past, because Director. Finance Director Swanson's been with us for so long, we valued her judgment and we've had, we had a good experience with that. I think it's very appropriate now where we've had to change. That we do have an external review and maybe we do that more periodically. I'm not sure, but I'm totally in favor of that.
And you weren't saying that you don't value Mike's judgment, but that.
Of course not, but he's new. I don't know what they're doing in Newport. Maybe maybe they do things differently in Newport. I don't know. No, no. Mike's great, but. I think this is the time.
Okay, just thought I just wanted to make that point, but.
Thank you, man.
I'm all in. So seeing no further discussion, all in favor of passing the amended emotion, please raise your hand and say aye. Hi, motion carries unanimously. Perfect. Thank you. So with that, we have.
Point of order, Mr. Do we vote on the amendment to begin with?
That was the amendment to the motion when you.
Sorry, I actually made a mistake and I apologize for that. So. A vote to, that's now we're going to have a vote to approve the amended motion. All in favor of.
Point of order, would you please restate the amended motion?
Ruth, can you do that for me?
The motion I have is. And second to formulate it. The city council approve a 3% cost of living increase effective July 1, 2022 for the nonrepresented staff. And add a salary review of all staff to be conducted prior to the next union negotiations.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of passing the amended motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for that point of order. I was definitely moving on.
No worries.
Next, we have the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And Council Cosi, you want to introduce that topic?
Yes, I will. And I want to thank Mr. Kevin Fear and his staff and Mike Mirzanski and all of those who contributed to this. I won't go to extended lengths to review that of this, although we can review it page by page if you wish. The format is the same as prior years. There have been additions made for the improvements to be made to sixteen to seventeenth street as well as the eleventh street work. And of course, the water treatment plant and the streetscapes project. And you'll also note that the feasibility study and the skate park has also been incorporated. I would like to note two specific corrections to it. One is on page nine. The facility improvement schedule, it appears that the footnote has been cut off. Maybe just the end of the word calculations, I'm not sure. And on page ten, the equipment replacement schedule is actually truncated, and there are two additional vehicles that should be listed for replacement in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. Looks like one of them made it, but not the other. Anyway, two amendments.
Thank you for that, for noticing those details. She's got an eye for detail, for sure. So we have a recommended motion. And I'll go ahead and make the, I'll move that the city council approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan as presented and edited by, as mentioned by Council Cosi. Council Nielsen, I saw a second flash up. Is that, or is that just a gang sign? Okay, started to check. You never know sometimes. So we have, so motion on the table, any further discussion or Council Cosi, do you want to speak to it?
Uh, no, unless there are specific questions to be addressed.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor of passing the motion? As, as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Thank you all. And with that, Councilor Cosi had sent out an email to us earlier today. It's not in the packet and wanted to make a couple of motions. Councilor Cosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll introduce these as separate motions, and I'd like to introduce a motion of confidence in support of city manager work, and I believe he was inappropriately accused of coercion in violation.
Point of order, Mayor. I think this topic has come to this agenda questionably. And if we're going to pursue this topic, I think it needs to be given opportunity for not only rebuttal, but also time to prepare. A similar statement, the statement in the packet was received, was sent on Tuesday. It was in the packet on Wednesday. There's no time, not only to rebut, but certainly, I'm not sure how quickly you would have gotten that on the agenda, and it's printed on the agenda, which suggests that perhaps the conversations happen before Tuesday. And likewise to Councilor Lowes, which came in on Wednesday. And my understanding is that generally, the rule has been packet information happens on Monday. My concern is that we have not given adequate or due diligence and space to this topic. Except from Councilor Cosi, we spent twenty-three minutes at the last meeting on this discussion. And since my name is included in this discussion, and it was unannounced to me that this was going to be a discussion, I would either like to be given the same twenty-three minutes to deliberate this before this council with preparedness. Or I would like it to be tabled and brought back so that I have time to rebut the statement that was made in that email, rather than having to respond on demand.
So first of all, let's get, you can't read, you can't table a motion that's not on the table.
Well, I call the point of order. We can do what we'd like to with it.
And so I hear you. The point of order, I don't think is quite correct, but I think that what would be appropriate would be to allow Council Cosi to finish making her motion. See if it gets a second. If you wish to make a motion to table it, that is entirely appropriate. And Jim, is that how you would, Jim, will you agree on that?
Well, you do have an agenda item on the, on the agenda itself. And so I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to table that agenda item.
Right. But after, but we do have a motion that's being stated in the moment.
Remember, motion to table is a privileged motion. So it can be, it can interrupt other motions.
Okay.
And it can be directed to the agenda item itself.
Okay, great. So Council Bisco, would you like to make a motion?
So I would like to move that we table this topic so that adequate and equitable time be given to.
Hang up. Wait, wait, wait. Let's just, I'm just.
Sure, how many times you interrupt other counselors?
I'm only trying to help you.
Trying to help me.
No, I am.
How about we just table this motion until the next meeting?
Okay, and then.
Excuse me, we tabled the agenda topic until the next meeting. I misspoke.
That's fine. That's perfect. But that is exactly what I was hoping for. So Council Bisco made a motion to table the conversation until the next meeting. Council Lehman, you second? Now, Council Bisco, would you like to speak to that motion?
Yes, I would. Number one, I would like the policy clarified for when packet information is entered into the packet and what that deadline actually is. Number two, I would like it clear what the process to get an agenda item on our agenda actually is, because I hear different different ideas, and I see it happening here. Number three, I would like to point out that Councilor Cosi was at no time called out of order when she brought this topic before the council, alleging misstatements about the word coercion and suggesting that we should determine what is or is not appropriate testimony. I would like to say that I in fact believe that there is questionable actions that have taken place. And I think that it's appropriate that either we hold that in executive session, which I'm perfectly willing to do. But that at a bare minimum, that we give this equitable time so that this discussion can be fully vetted before the council.
Great. That is perfect procedurally, and I appreciate your patience.
And Mayor.
Process. So now.
I want to make it clear that I take that as a condescending statement, and you may take that however you wish, but that is how I perceive that. Because for all of the things that none of us do perfectly here and that we're all learning, I don't need you to approve my process.
I'm only trying to encourage. I'm only trying to illustrate that this is appropriate, and that's the right way to do it. Thank you.
I don't take it as that, so I just want to make that clear for the.
I have, I have no question that you don't take it that way. Jim, are you had your hand up?
Just, I, I thought it would be worth mentioning that typically, when you make a motion to table, you don't debate it. The motion is made, it's seconded, you vote on it, you move on.
Got it. Thank you. So all in favor of tabling the motion? To table the agenda item? So all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Actually, I will, I will vote to table this, only because I think it's appropriate to have the motion in the packet as written. So I, and all opposed? I'm sorry, I should not have offered my reasoning. All opposed? Sorry, I, all in favor of carrying the motion to table, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, all opposed? Please raise your hand and say nay. All abstentions?
I.
Okay, so motion to table the, the agenda item until the next meeting is carried for to zero to three.
Could we, can I ask a question really quickly?
Yeah, we're getting ready to get staff to council reports. That would be a great time to ask that question. But first, we have council reports. So Council Nielsen?
About, about the police committee report?
Did you want to offer?
My question was about the motions of, motions of confidence. Do motions of confidence typically have a counterpoint or a debate, or they, I mean, it's, I'm not sure the procedure on motions of confidence is what I'm asking.
I can't tell you that there is a typical motion of confidence. My experience is it's much more common to get motions of no confidence. And again, there's not any particular priority or, or function for those. It's it is a motion and it can be debated and it can have whatever reasoning that the council wants to have in it.
Thank you. And then I also wanted, Council Bisco had asked some questions about getting items onto the agenda. And it's in our council rules, I think it's stated quite clearly. It says that we can a counselor should give information to the city manager and or myself seven days in advance that the city manager and I also can add agenda items to the agenda at our discretion. And that we can all make them, any one of us can make a motion to add an agenda item to an agenda. Chris, am I missing anything? Or Jim?
That's what I was just reading in the council rules that were just recently approved here a few months ago.
Yeah. And so that, yes, so through that process, and that's how this item got onto the agenda. It was mentioned to us two weeks at our first council meeting. It came, the request came in last week, and we got it onto the agenda before the agenda packet went out. So there you have it. I'm guessing that Council Bisco would like to comment on that.
I would. So my recollection is that we made a motion to table that indefinitely. And if this request came in two weeks ago, the information in the email is only in the packet today. If this request was going to come and it was a statement calling me out for something that is an interpretation, not necessarily a fact, and that will be debated. I think that it would have been appropriate to notify me that my name was going to be in this packet with this motion or relating to this motion of confidence.
Thank you for that. I don't, I don't think that that is, Jim, is that established policy that we should have reached out to Council Bisco? That doesn't really sound like that's something that.
I, I think when you put something on the agenda, that's letting the council know what's on the agenda.
And Councilor Low?
Well, I have council report. What if the items is in here or the other, something I want to bring up? So I, my, I do have a memo that originally I thought could get into the agenda here for this meeting. And it is part of our package. It's here. But I don't have any desire to, to really discuss it. This meeting is more of a heads up. I think it's, it speaks for itself, and I think we can discuss it at another, at the next council meeting, if there's a time, I think that would be good. The second thing I want to bring up, though, is in our packet also, it's the information provide that concerns the Miller subdivision and the correspondence from Miller's attorney, Levi's attorney, the DEQ and the DEQ's response. And this also ties in with the planning commission's decision on the on, on the whatever it is, realignment or whatever you want to say, change of the, of the plan. So I, I appreciate that Levi Miller is saying that he does affordable housing. I think that's important. And I appreciate that he has monetary problems and he has other issues. And he did provide four letters of support for his development, but I know three individuals directly who would say otherwise, and that Mr. Miller has not performed as he said he would in a number of instances with individual homeowners. And it's causing a lot of consternation. The methane issue is relevant. There is a homeowner that has told me that she has the highest level of methane of anybody in that development. And and if I read the DEQ's letter correctly, it's the lower explosive limit is five percent by volume. This particular person is ten times that at fifty point seven percent per value lower explosive. So that's really true. And this person that I know, and I haven't collaborated, but is, is saying they have the highest. Then I think this is really unacceptable. And furthermore, I heard from this individual that the fan that was installed for her is not working. And she has considerable problems getting in touch with Mr. Miller and/or his representatives. I also have firsthand experience through my granddaughter who bought in that subdivision, and they've had a lot of problems, and that we've had to personally get involved to, to try to do something for her. So I don't, I know that the city, and I appreciate that the city has limited ability to, to do anything, but there is another letter in here from Trevor, I forget his last name, but a gentleman who addressed us back last August, he's coming back to us saying things haven't been resolved. And he suggests if there's anything the city can do as a condition of anything that Levi is asking us, that we, we do that, that we somehow get him to, to be responsive to the people he sold these houses to. I think that's very important, and I'm not sure where we go with that, but I really don't like what's happening there.
Chris, do you want to comment on that, or is there any?
Yeah, so I've been contacted by a few of the members that live there that have had individual problems. I've been able to address those on kind of a one at a time, one by one method. So I guess if there's individual property owners, I hadn't heard about a fan not working or things like that. So if they're having trouble getting ahold of the developer, I would have them contact me, and I can follow up on those personally. I happen to do that.
If I could just say, and I appreciate that, Chris, and folks are very, you know, they're appreciative of that, but I'm not sure just how effective it is. I'm not sure if Levi really is responding. I, you know, if it, if it was one time and it was settled, that'd be one thing, but when I kind of hear the same issues coming up repeatedly, and especially with the idea that, that he's not available, he's not there. He was there for the homeowners meeting, he was there when he wanted to go for the planning commission. But I think there's something to be said that he shows up when it's to his benefit, but doesn't seem to be there when the folks are, they're wanting him to be there. I just think that's very it, it's just very poor behavior and disingenuous. And no matter how affordable a house is, if you can't talk to the builder and get resolution, you know, I just, I just think it's a bad. So I got my point across. Thank you.
I know. And Council Low, I appreciate that sentiment. Thank you. And Counsel Lo, I appreciate that sentiment and I I do hear that again, I've heard from several homeowners there. And again, have resolved many of the issues that have been raised, not all of the issues, but many of the issues that haven't raised, we have been able to take care of and address and correct. And so you know, I think it, to be fair, you know, the the developer has taken actions to remedy many of the issues that have come up, but there's still a lot outstanding. One of the conditions of approval for the major modification by the planning commission was that all of the issues in phase one and phase two be resolved before the developer is allowed to proceed with phase, phase three. And so there is some teeth in this at this point, this the city, primarily myself, we do, I do have quite a bit of leverage at this point. You know, he's, he's got a modification to allow for future development, but again, it is subject to him taking care of all of these issues in phase one of phase two. The methane being included, the the storm drain issues being included. And then individual, you know, lot lines, property lines being included. So many of the complaints that we've heard, I do feel like I have leverage on. So again, I'd encourage if individuals are having issues getting a hold of the developer to contact me, it's a deal. And I'll do what I can to resolve those.
That's very good to hear, Chris. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Counsel Bisco.
So just to help clarify, first in reading the the agenda packet information on the Mill Pond development, I found that there were some inconsistencies in the letter from what I recall reading from the DEQ information as well, going back to last spring, we had mentioned this at Public Works Committee meeting, the concerns that were being brought by folks in the community. I too wanted to support that before we even consent, matter of fact, I'm not sure why we're why we're doing business with a company that has not complied with the conditions of approval from the original plan. I think when we put ourselves at the risk of a company potentially not completing infrastructure that should be completed before even we start building, that that's a concern and we've seen that pattern now twice for sure and potentially over on Quail Glen as well. And that gets us to the North Eleven Street, street not being improved by the developer of Quail Glen, and now it's coming to the city and it's coming to the property owners to take care of that. So I would encourage this council to at least look at how do we ensure that the conditions of approval that require infrastructure to be placed before permits are issued and before certificate certificates of occupancy are issued actually in fact, take place so we don't have this kind of perpetual challenge and situation with folks that have bought from developers that treat our community this way.
And then I have one report as well, brief one. The mayor of Newport has been facing some health, some major health issues recently and just want to let everyone know that and acknowledge and I just personally, I've been thinking about him. He's on the cog with me and yeah, Dean Sawyer. And yeah, it's just, it's been sad to see him go through some of the health struggles that he's been facing the last number of months. So. Counsel Andri.
I just heard my report, I just wanted to stress, go back to that social media policy and the the changes that we made. I just want to stress that I'm really happy with the changes and that my disappointment was merely because we just hadn't gotten to it as a council and it just held that in the new tech, acquiring new tech, which is really important and needed requires a policy and we just, it just highlights the need. So I just wanted to make that clear. I realized it might have not sounded that way before.
Thank you. So and Chris Stafford.
Yeah, just briefly getting several directors running be here tonight. Talked to Police Chief Ken Rubin. I just want to give you the heads up this year is a kind of a full on accreditation year. So they're going to be pretty busy up there and this is every three years. They do a full in-depth audit. So they'll be busy getting getting insured that their accreditation goes well this year. So they'll be busy with that. Chelsea asked me a report back. She's taken the lead with the Park Advisory Board. Again, the skate park is approved and the couple improvement plan tonight, looking at a feasibility study this year and potentially construction next year of a replacement of the skate park. Did get our application into Benton County Commissioners for for that request coming out of the Budget Committee. So that's been done. I think we mentioned funding or the the grant that we received for Cochrane Veterans Memorial Park, fifty thousand dollars coming from state veterans program. We actually made some local and regional news on that. So if you didn't catch that in the newspaper on TV, that was kind of nice to get a good nod to our press release. I would call that a slow news day, but at the same time good report to get out there and good light on flow myths. And so she'll be working at the park board to not only work on the memorial portion of that park, but also to work on the neighborhood aspect of that, looking at shoring up the budget for the gazebo and some of the other park amenities that were included for that park. So they'll continue to work on that. They're busy on music in the park. I believe they've selected all the bands this year for music in the park. And they had sponsorships, I believe for the whole slot of those. And I think it was two hundred dollars per performance and some of those have already said they intend to just contribute that money back to the Performing Arts Fund that's been established in town. So that's good news. And the art committee that she oversees or that she staffs is working or moving forward with the inlays. Some good progress there, working with the contractor and getting that underway. We are expecting a little bit of delay there. But they know their time constraints. It looks like we are on schedule to deliver those prior to start of the construction of the street project, which is my first report coming from me on streetscape is that we did hear back from ODOT here last week, they need a little bit more time before they're going to be ready to go out for bid. Acquiring right of way, even temporary right of way easement so that they can work around the site. Sometimes in order to pour a sidewalk on the proper line, you have to step on that neighbor's property. And before ODOT can step or ODOT's contractor can step on their property, they need a temporary easement in place. All of those take a lot of time to get into place. And even though they've been working on them for over a year, they just don't feel like they were prepared enough to still hit that end of May release date. And so they've asked for a two month bump essentially at this point. So end of July is the new target for releasing the bid with construction to still start late in the fall, in the summer. They do anticipate with the schedule, we'll still be able to have the same end date next summer. But again, subject to change and further delays and everything else. So just just another day in a big construction project before we get him out the door, we're seeing some delays in the preparation going into it. And I'll kind of leave it to that. Happy to answer your questions. I see a couple hands up.
I also had a, Chris, we should probably also congratulate our lady warriors, right?
We should.
Yeah.
That was big news coming out of Saturday. Or coming out of Friday night, I guess it was Warrior basketball team took first place at state, which was awesome. Yeah, congratulations to them.
Yes, congratulations to the lady warriors and comes with them. You had a comment or question or?
I did. I had a couple of things actually. Also of note, the boys took fourth in state, so let's not leave them out of anything. And I would also encourage anybody who gets a chance to attend the state basketball tournament in person. It was phenomenal this year. It was down in Marshfield. The gym was packed for the championship game and it was just an electric atmosphere and even if you're not a basketball fan, you should go sometime just so you can get the sense of it. Also, wanted to report back that the the regional transportation plan now has acknowledged that a study needs to be done for congestion issues on Highway twenty thirty four and the I'll forget the acronyms. Anyway, there is a process underway to actually fund that study, which is not done and the regional transportation plan is done outside of that plan. So wanted to thank everybody who took the time to participate in the online and in-person comment periods for the regional transportation plan. We at least have some acknowledgement that there might be congestion issues on Highway twenty thirty four now. So thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Andri.
That's awesome news, Counsel Lehman. I also had some questions for Chris about some of his report. Having to do with the Park Advisory Board. I'm fine with them, like, you know, we've given them or past councils have given them you know, latitude to hire bands and such, but what's the policy? I guess what is the policy for spending money by an advisory committee? I don't know if there's like a certain limit where they have to ask counsel. I was just concerned about that financially. And then also with regards to the memorial at the neighborhood park, it sounds like it's a done deal. But again, as an advisory committee, shouldn't they be getting sending their recommendations to us and I mean, I'm sure they're great, but I I just it feels odd to not have any of that information.
Yeah. So the the grant is coming our way, the actual proposal, what's going to be done is still under works. In fact, we haven't released a request for bids or request for project ideas. The concept has been to put a bust or a statue or something there as part of that memorial. That's what the grant was written for that the city applied for and was approved by the council. So so now that's changed, but that specific details have not been approved by the council and that will come back to the council from the advisory committee.
Okay, thank you. And then the.
Funding. So in the past, some of the bands have requested funds in order to come and play, others have not. I've authorized expenditure of the some of the discretionary funds in the council budget in the past for that. This year, I believe they've already, Chelsea's already talked to Mike about setting up a separate line item in next year's budget so that we can capture the music in the park as its own kind of program, similar to what we do with like the flower basket program and some of these others where they're really discretionary, but you want to kind of prove ahead of time. And then once it gets in that budget, then it would be approved at the staff level by their Chelsea or myself.
Great, thank you.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And with that, I think that it's nine forty two and time to adjourn the meeting. Really appreciate you all being here tonight. Jim, did you have a report? Okay, really appreciate y'all being here tonight and having a great productive conversation. So thank you and we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Go Warriors.